Hi, we've had messages all day.
Oh, yeah.
Please record your message. When you finish for...
Oh, you're messing with me.
I think she knows. Our call meeting to order. Please rise and pledge your belief.
To the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Ask for approval, your agenda or your changes?
I have two, I have two changes. First of all, I wanted to withdraw the motion, the first motion that I made on the agenda regarding some racket club space. I just received a copy of part of the contract from Fisher Marine this morning, and I'm still missing information on there. And additionally, when I went by last night, it appeared some of the items in question from the neighborhood, the concerned citizens this week are related to Department of Natural Resources, which was not part of the motion. And I don't have an answer as to why that's there. I think it would be best to add that to the agenda to our work session on September 19th, so that possibly we can provide more information and bring that to discussion for a better plan than what that motion originally stated. I'd like to withdraw that. I also would like to withdraw the amendment regarding the food truck. In my explanation to why that amendment, I made the motion on the food truck, amending the budget to remove that. I had an explanation for the motion that was issued to the board. Instead, I'd like to replace and insert another motion, which I believe would solve the same problem I was trying to do with the food truck. And, yes. Do you want me to read the motion aloud this time, or just we will come to it?
Yes, please read it out.
Okay. In replacing the food truck motion, I'm motioning the Board Director's motion Pines with closed session, discuss contractual issues permitted by the Maryland Homeowners' Association Act, Section 11B, 111. Number four, meaning the directors or other governing body of homeowners associations or committee of the homeowners association may be held in closed session on following purposes. Taking item one, discussion matters pertaining to employees or personnel, specifically the general miners' contract dated May 1st, 2014, and extended by the previous board on April 28th to 2016.
And I have...
What did you say?
Yes, I have a request to...
No, 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 he's reading, he's reading.
And, Mr. President, I have a request, the request from Steen Associates, requesting boards to vote and approve today regarding the names of the streets for his development. This was just brought to my attention a couple of hours ago. And I would like, with your permission, to read motion, purpose and effect. Motion to be introduced. I'm not reading mine, I'm reading yours. Motion to be introduced by Sullivan Credit at the special meeting, August 76, 2016. Motion. I move that the Board of Directors for the Ocean Pines Association will approve the street names with one change, to rename Winner's Circle Drive to Breckness Drive and keeping Winner's Circle forward and force King's Richards Road, where it ties into the existing King Richards Road, related to the development known as Triple Crown Estates, being developed by Steen Associates. Background. Today, the developer secured approval from the Director of Emergency Services for Wester County. Yesterday, Mr. Thompson was contacted by Mr. Steen for assistance. Mr. Steen is reaching out to the board now at the advice received from Mr. Thompson. Purpose and effect. The county's DRP office also requires that Steen Associates secures approval from Ocean Pines Association. Since the OPA's regular board meeting is not until September 24th, Mr. Steen is asking that the board considers his request de-reviewed and voted on today. This will allow Steen Associates, Inc., to proceed with securing final approval from Wester County in a timely manner.
Any other changes to the agenda? Go ask for approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's approved. I'm just gonna quit, make a quick announcement. The recent discussion meeting of all today, this was at our organization meeting this past Monday, the board requested review, discussion with management regarding the following projects: Manclin Meadows, Phase One, Beach Club bathrooms, Country Club, and the White Horse Park bathroom. Facilitate the exchange of information among the various participants. I'll suspend Robert's rules of order for this segment of the meeting.
You'll...
Yes.
You'll ask, this is...
I ask to suspend the rules for this segment of the meeting.
Right, excuse me. None opposed?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hello?
Hey, Pat.
Hi there.
You're on speaker with rest of the board. The board meeting's already started.
Hi, Pat.
Alright, hold on one second.
Hi, Pat.
We're gonna start discussion on the projects that we spoke about at the organizational meeting. Manclin Meadows, Beach Club bathrooms, Country Club, White Horse Park bathroom. You there?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Hill, you brought the motion to the table.
Um, Manclin Meadows, actually, a little bit of a motion.
That you were mentioning, correct?
Yeah, so...
Either one, either one.
Uh, Manclin Meadows, I had requested an explanation of exactly what the scope of work for the project is, what was put out the bid, and what contracts were awarded and related to that project. The Beach Club bathrooms, I asked for an explanation and a contractual document review related to the $60,000 quote that was provided with the RFP sheet, and RFP shared $86,000. And when I saw a contract of $100,000 with beach construction, oh, sorry, that's White Horse Park, with beach construction for the White Horse Park bathrooms, I'd asked for a presentation on the Beach Club bathroom proposals and explanation of what patio, patio furniture-related work has been discussed for the last two months at the board meeting that I believe Ms. Jacobs was questioning at the July meeting. That was the request.
You want me to make?
Oh, you ask specific questions on those, ask the specific questions to the general manager.
So, yeah, whichever project you prefer to start with.
I'm a little confused. I thought it was just, thought we're giving updates, we're gonna start an order of Manclin Meadows, Beach Club, Country Club, White Horse Park. Is that alright?
That's fine, that's fine, whatever your preferences is.
As requested by the board, I have Jerry Veda, who's gonna start with the Manclin Meadows project. I have the slides.
Thank you.
Along with...
Thank you, Bob.
It's a warm shirt.
Oh, thanks.
Is this one?
Yes.
Well, good afternoon. Glad to be here. I'd rather do this than go home on weekends. No, I really appreciate that, too. Bob asked me to step you through the chronology of the project from actually the inception to where we are today. I'll try to cover all the activities the best I can, short timeframe, and bring you up to speed exactly where we are today. I thought I'd start, just give you a general, quick, full orientation of the area, but we're gonna go through several slides showing you the different concepts that we consider. This is the area closest to Manclin Road. Manclin Road is running along the left side of the slide there. That, the path in the middle is the main entrance way into the Manclin Meadows Park. Immediately on your right is the community center, Community Gardens, and its associated parking lot. Then you'll go past the playground on your right. Crossing the playground is the dog park, leading back to the tennis area where the club is and the park. Okay? Everybody good with that? This is, now we've changed the orientation, now you're entering into the tennis area. The main road is the dark stripe middle there. You come into the area, and you have two existing parking lots, one on the right, one on the left. Straight ahead is a clubhouse. To the left side of the slide here are the existing platform tennis courts. We have four. And to the top of the slide are the existing tennis courts. So those are the two areas that the project entails. And I'm gonna combine them to some general slides, and then I'm gonna explode them to each piece, because the project involves each piece. Okay? When we started the project, we involved the racket advisor committee and all the various clubs, and we gathered from them their input as far as what are, what would they like to see in terms of expanding the capabilities at the center. We actually entertained, I think it was, four different concepts, but I, in my scramble, I could only find two. So, I'm gonna show you two, and you get the idea that we, we had the community involved and considered many different options to go forth in the project. This was one of the projects, and I think Bill, I know Bill, you were involved in that, and I...
Excuse me, Derek, so?
Sure.
Oh, is your question regarding, give me $150,000 approval phase one for Manclin Creek, or are you talking about the original project?
My question, my question to what, was what the board approved, specifically what the board approved, $150,000.
$150,000, so, correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna get to that, but I wanted to give you a little bit of the project, how we got there. If that's okay.
Okay. His question is more related to what was by the board?
I will cover that.
Okay.
You get, you, you get there in about 10 minutes, if that's, 10 minutes, five minutes?
I think the question is to whether to buy the board for $150,000.
I'll step to this from...
Thank you.
We looked at a couple of proposals. We came up with the final design. The final design was in two parts. This is the part concerning the pickleball. The, in the middle of the screen are the four Phase One pickleball courts. The dark is for the initial phase for four courts. The shaded area next to, or the unshaded area next to it are for the Phase Two, the four pickleball courts at a later date. That circle with SWM is a stormwater management, part of the project which involved to, had to be accommodated according to the design, according to the county requirements. This is the other part of the project where the platform courts are proposed. The red blocks saying "platform courts," pointing to the two courts are the initial two platform courts, and immediately right below it are the future platform tennis courts. This is the timeline of the project. We did due diligence on the RFP, we reached out to 30 contractors, we got one consolidated response. This was the project estimate. It started back in as far as 13, where the, I believe the racket committee came up with the initial cost estimate for the project. We fine-tuned that in January of 15, in preparing for the fiscal year 16 budget. I was involved with that, Public Works was involved with that, Sonia, Rexon Parks, and we had Tim... Long?
Yes.
Okay, you all know Tim. He was involved in, and Tim has experience in the construction area. And we went through piece by piece and estimated the components of the project. We broke it down in those areas. The platform tennis estimate was based on a contract estimate we had from a builder that's in Ohio that has done work for us in the past. The other estimates were based on bringing our resources together in-house, past experience, and coming up with those numbers the best we could. They, you see, the site work was not according to the final design that the county approved. Electrical was for power and lights for all the courts. On the far right is the actual proposal we got. Again, we got one proposal out of touching base with about 30 contractors. We got one consolidated proposal, proposal from a general contractor, and he had two sets with him. This is the main reason for the disparity. The electrical design was not what we anticipated, or we didn't anticipate the complexity of electrical design. When we first started the project, we thought secondary power, the power needed to light the courts and power the courts, was available in close enough proximity where we could make it happen. When we got the electrical engineers involved and the power company involved, that was not the case. The code, the, the run was too far, so we actually had to bring primary power into the middle of the project and extend it out. That was a cost we were not counting on. That's what happened at the design when we designed the project. Same with the stormwater mitigation. When we laid out the initial requirements, we hadn't considered things like four bays, bio-retention areas, and bioswells. All those are processes used and required by the county to get the stormwater back into the system, filtered and in a manageable way. The lesson learned from that is we should have done some more hardcore engineering analysis right up front, involve electrical engineers, involve structural engineers, to actually give us a hardcore estimate before we went into the budget process. That's something we did not do.
Derek?
Yes?
Did any of the county requirements change between time it began and apartments proposed then, whether changes specifically to stormwater mitigation issues?
Not that I'm aware of, but that's a question that Steve Soleil would really answer. And I, we invited him today, and he could not make, so, I'm not sure, but I don't believe so. Move forward to March 24th, when the GM proposed a restructured phase approach to the projects. This is directly from his GM report. And that was proposed at the budget, I mean, at the board meeting. There was no decision made, it was deferred to a special meeting, which occurred on March 29th. These are the proposals that I think you're asking about, and what's been done according to that. So...
Thank you.
I got there in, what, five minutes?
Thank you.
What has been done specifically? Back to what Bob said back in the board meeting, we're gonna explore ways to save money with regard to the stormwater management. We did that through first looking at how to redesign the proposed stormwater retention pools. Basically, the alternative was to do it through the natural process, to do the sloping and let the natural infiltration through the soil back to the groundwater, if we could get the appropriate infiltration characteristic in the soil. The test proved that was not doable. We could not get there from there, and so the natural infiltration process was disallowed. That was as a result of testing from HK Associates in June 20, on June 24th, a few that month or so ago. The raised platform tennis courts, that was one area we thought if we, the design has them on the surface, we thought if they could be raised off the surface, that would alleviate some of the stormwater mitigation issues. It did not. It does not change the amount of impervious service, surface of the courts that's still there. You're just raising it, and still the mitigation stays the same. So, that was advised by Soleil Associates. So basically, after that, two efforts, we came, the conclusion was, the design that we have is the only acceptable design for the current project configuration.
Says, current project configuration of courts, park lots.
Correct.
Are you saying the Phase One, where the playground is, includes courts?
This is where it gets a little confusing. Phase One and Phase Two, as designed, as named by the design, as approved by the county, is different from this definition. So when I say Phase One and Phase Two, I'm talking about as defined to the county in our design of the project. So the answer is yes. When I say Phase One, I'm referring to the, the courts and the stormwater mitigation and everything involved in Phase One, which involved four pickleball courts and two platform courts and the parking lot. That is Phase One of the project.
Phase One that was approved by the board, $150,000 is including the planned sports?
No. I'm sorry. This is a confusion. This is a confusion. Phase One that was approved by the board is couched here in Bob's GM report on March 24th. See where it says Phase One? Bob was attempting, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but he was attempting to restructure an approach to the project in order to try to save some money. And when that was proposed to the board, the board decided to defer to the special meeting. At the special meeting, the motion for Phase One is referring to Bob's proposal. That is different from Phase One as defined by the county and as articulated in our design. That's the confusion. This is what the board approved on March 29th, move forward. And if you read through that, it's, in my opinion, a little challenging, because, if I can say that. The expansion and resurfacing of the parking lot, good, got that. Well, I think we're talking about the ones nearest to the clubhouse. I think those, no, talking about the Community Gardens. Okay. I guess that's what that's referring to. Repair and relocation associated with playground and Community Gardens, got that. Constructing fencing, I'm not sure which fencing that's... Okay, got it.
Oh, the split rail, in addition to the split rail.
Okay, got it. With the cost of this work to be based on the bids received not to exceed less the cost of proposed construction of the pickle court. I think the construction of the pickle court's estimate that we are referring to is the one we did at the budget bill, which was about $50,000. So I guess that's what it's saying. So I guess what is authorized is for that work not to exceed $100,000, I think. I don't...
No.
No, okay.
No, it's okay, it is confusing. What it was, it's 150, because that was after, we had two or two and a quarter, including the pickleball court. Where it said, "Don't do the pickleball courts, but let's proceed with playground, move the fence, and fix the Community Gardens." And that's where the 150 number comes in. That's where, that's the total of 150,000.
When you say, "Don't include the pickleball courts," you mean the construction of the courts themselves, or you still, or you, or is it still preparation courts that are, is still included?
Yeah, no, 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 no. The, the stormwater management for Phase One, okay, and that's where the confusion comes. Phase One is the playground side. When you come in, on the right side, you run into Community Gardens, then you have the playground coming up. Okay? That's fine. I mean, so you have the, on the right side, Community Gardens, the playground when you first come in. Okay? So when you're looking at that, go back one, there you go, that's the easy, if you don't mind. No, there's, no, no, there you go. There you go. Sorry. Okay, when you come in, okay, you're coming in off road here, and you're turning into the, to the complex. Right side, you have your Community Gardens. Okay, you have your L-shaped part, your flag parking lot right now, okay, your playground. And, and then this area has a gazebo and some other things. The 150 allows us to do stormwater mitigation for this area. Can't just do one, because it impacts this whole area. So the stormwater retention pond area is over in here, and that's where you mark that in the red, and that's on that other page for you. So the work here is what's 150, less the courts. Where it said, "Don't do courts." So we stopped there. But we still, the stormwater mitigation for Phase One is primarily this area. Because on this side and over here, stormwater is handled different. So, that's what this Phase One was, was at the time, and that's what we had proposed. And when the board said no to the courts, they said yes, get the playground and go ahead and handle the stormwater mitigation.
Okay, so we explored those savings, just the estimates.
Yeah. I don't even really wanna interrupt. This is kind of the point I was wanting to follow, and I kinda get it. So, I don't know. At the time, meeting, and basically asking the question, well, you know, what's the next step? The proposals that you talked about, oh, I get it, but they, they didn't specify this work. I mean, there weren't proposals. Or, I mean, and moreover, proposals that we had at, in hand, at that point in time, did not break down the tasks into costs. I mean, so, you couldn't, I mean, they each had the same number of tasks in them. They included pickleball courts and everything else. But it, there was no, it wasn't separately priced, it wasn't given any indication at all of how much pickleball was cost, or how much stormwater mitigation, so, retention cost. No prices for that. So when we get to this proposal, I think we're, I felt like we were in the same place. You don't have proposal or specification. This particular work is out. Am I correct on that?
We actually had proposal. Rains provide proposals, and Parafirma provide two proposals.
For this specific...
For Phase, yes, sir, for that phase.
Well, this, this, for the, for the board-approved motion, because I've never seen, I mean, for that, you say for that phase, but the motion made by Mr. Carey didn't, wasn't for the phase, it didn't include pickleball. It includes, it includes moving the playground, it includes stormwater mitigation, it includes fences.
Well, I guess my question is, Bob, if the board approved $150,000 with pickleball removed Phase One, is there a modified contract date that's, that shows, I guess, that defines scope of work? And then the, as Jerry pointed out earlier, the $750,000 with the two phases was excluding the playground. So how are we accounting for replacing the playground? Because, or, or I guess I'll back that up. Is, are we replacing the playground in Phase One, because it's, was excluded in the proposal provided? And if we are replacing it, then where is, how, where's the scope of work, or how is that being accounted for?
Yeah, the playground is, at the inception, it was built 15, 20 years ago, was done with community funds raised and rebuilt it. It was self-help, we all put it together. In last year's budget, we budgeted for the, and basically, the playground, the repairs are the uprights. Okay, we've already ordered them, they, they were approved, ordered, and we have them. They're, they're sitting in Public Works. Okay, so basically, all the posts, all the, the bottom of those are what's, what's deteriorating, and it's primarily because it's so soft and soggy. The water just doesn't, you know, you've had your kids who have talked about, it's, it's spongy all the time. So the intent was to improve that, if we're gonna rebuild this, and put the new posts in, we wanna do two things. We wanna improve the drainage, so it doesn't stay wet moving forward. Okay? And that's what we did get proposals for. And, and the proposals did indeed include pickleball courts, because that's what we initially did. But the board said, do everything but the pickleball. So they said, remove that. So we already bought the playground, we already bought the, and that was separate from this. The uprights have already been bought, and we're just waiting to install them. But we need the earthwork accomplished, so the stormwater works appropriately before we do uprights for the playground.
It's not a replacement of playground, it's a location and repair.
Who was doing that, who's doing that work? Because that was not spelled out.
We are. Public Works.
We're doing, we're doing it in-house.
Yes.
Okay.
So we still have, the playground is intact, we're not doing, I mean, we were carrying it, we're leaving it as, as it...
Well, no, they're moving it.
And then they're moving...
We're gonna shift the parking lot, we pick up more, and it's a gravel parking lot. So we're, instead of a flag lot, we're making it a straight-in lot, and use all the additional spaces that we picked up by doing. You, you get more parking for both playground as well as Community Gardens. And in doing that, it allows folks not, and part of the split-rail fence was so folks don't have to park on the street. They're able to park in that gravel parking lot to either make a left and go to the playground, or a right to the Community Garden. So it keeps kids and parents off the street. And the stormwater mitigation was so we don't remove the playground in 10 or 15 years, go to the bottoms or rot it again. Can seal them, but since the whole area stays spongy and sog, like, for any Can seal them, but since the whole area stays spongy and soggy, like bringing dirt in and doing stormwater mitigation, it was going to dry the area out.
And, and we talked about, but we weren't there yet in terms of costs, putting a new surface in that would be, uh, soft, spongy rather than, uh, mulch kind of surface. And, and we have talked about trying to get pricing for that as a part of this, but we weren't there yet, haven't discussed that. And we did change the entrance to the community gardens as a part of this as well.
What, do we have a contract with that revised scope at a price?
We do not. And we don't have a proposal for it as far as I can see. I mean, I've seen those two proposals, and they're not for this. I mean, they don't have the revised scope.
How are we doing with the proposals for that specific work?
Yeah, we're not, in question, we're not seeking them, we're still waiting to find out county approval for that side. The county was working with us, Jerry had mentioned the stormwater mitigation.
Yeah.
The bio-retention pond was the most expensive way for stormwater mitigation here. So we had to test accomplish, and it did on several different times to see if this, if the soils were compatible, once we did the earthwork, where it would drain properly without having to put bio-retention pond. It failed several times, it was H and K or what, what was the contractor, do you remember?
HKM.
HKM Contracting came out, did that work? So we were hoping to save the money on the bio-retention pond. It did not, I don't know, and Billy, you might be able to help me perk, is that a perk or not?
It's called a tank test.
It's called, thank you, a perk test. So it didn't, it didn't perk properly, so we have to put the bio-retention pond to manage the storm. I mean, it, it's really, that's it. You all, or the previous board said no to the pickleball courts. Doesn't change the drainage situation for us, or putting a straight-in parking lot that supports playground and the community gardens, and it doesn't change the split rail fence because that was a safety issue. It, you know, parents parking in the parking lot, making their kids on the playground, supposed to on the street.
Well, okay, it's so, from what you're saying, that the, the next, you need to get a permit, and then the next step is to get a revised price based on the new scope of work?
Revised estimates from, the, the lowest price for the earthwork was from rains, actually. We had Parafirma and rains, and that was provided. Rain saying a gravel actually had the, uh, most cost-effective, uh, earthwork where they were doing the stormwater mitigation work to include the bio-retention pond, and we did have pricing.
Okay, what, I know the permit's out of your hands, once you have the permit, what is the timeline for being able to move it to a contract, work to commence and then to complete?
Well, let's see, we'll move, as soon as we get the permit, make sure the county's stamped everything that's going to finalize, and Suley's been working for that process. Suley, uh, is the engineer. Once that's finalized, we, we're not going to waste time doing, we have, we're ready to do the work, we just need to file a stamp, prove to do so. And the drainage, as you saw, was only a month ago, where the drainage failed twice for the perk test. So that says we have to use the bio-retention pond now. We can't, there's no other solution for storm.
Okay. Well, it's still my, it's.
I can't give you a timeframe until we actually get the final approval from the county, then we'll put out, we'll reach back up Parafirma, as well as rains, and anybody else who might want to be able to do earthwork for us, so we'll just get some bids to do that work, that part of the work, the stormwater and the bio-retention pond. No need to do it now until we finalize the stamp. We already did that once, and we know about where we are, and that's where the one fifty number.
Okay.
Well, suppose we just, second argument, suppose we don't do anything right now? I mean, suppose we, we don't, we upgrade, fix the pickle, or not the playground as well as we can, leave where it is, uh, and, uh, we don't put it in the parking lot, do whatever you're going to do with that, and suppose we just don't do anything? Are you saying we still have to go in and do all that stormwater mitigation anyway?
No, what I'm, I, I'm not. Never said that. What I'm saying is, i- if you just want, if the board approves, changes with the previous board approved, and just says, do the playground, we're going to have a wet playground as we do now. Certainly can do that, but we're going to have the same conditions. We're also going to have less parking, and we're also not going to put the split rail fence in unless the board directs us.
You'll have less parking for the playground.
And/or community gardens, correct.
Sure. Okay.
Bob, um, the original plan, from what I saw in some of those bits, for, for the original phase, um, they talked about taking down twenty-five trees. I guess that was the clear room for the courts. Will this, just move in the playground or we have to take down twenty-five trees?
And, no, no, you're, we're going to be able to take out fewer trees, and we went back, we're also going to, like, turn the playground, instead of having it laid out. You, you know how the playground, the way the playground currently sits, we're not going to be able to redesign, it's designed to all the parts. Uh, when we take it apart, we're going to rebuild it, it's going to be the same layout, but we're going to shift it so we can keep more trees on the playground side. And Steve was helpful with that, helping us moving that around so we can fit it in, moving it closer to the gardens and taking out fewer trees. And certainly since we're not putting pickleball courts, then we don't have to take any trees out on that side, except for anything that's right around that stormwater mitigation pond. Uh, when Jerry showed it, it's a wide, it's a wider area, but if you look a little closer, the pond's actually smaller than that red circle. The pond is the only area where a little more work's going to have to be done, but from the, from any trees. But we specifically designed the playground to fit around the existing trees that are there, best we can, I mean, some have to come out.
Okay. Jerry, can you go back one slide? I think we skipped over the court conversion, which I, I know with everything going with the bigger project, this was important to get moving. It appears we have pricing on a lot of this work, and it will be done thirty to forty-five days after contract awards. The pricing's been received and, I mean, these are broken up into smaller chunks, Bob, where they're all within your threshold for authorization, they don't need board authorization. What do we need to move forward and get this done?
Well, my issue is, notice the biggest one's the asphalt. I only received one bid. We, we don't operate on one bid, we've been trying to get new bids.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I get on you for that.
Well, we start one time, we actually do it.
The court conversion cost.
So now what's going to happen, Brett, just for clarity, we're about to put out for our road, a part of the issue is the time, just the timing didn't work out so well. As a matter of fact, board approved to do the, um, bumper's parking lot for the paving and that, we're trying to do it in June. With all the rain we had, they couldn't do it in June. So, uh, Parafirma was awarded the bid, they moved it to July fourth weekend, if you all remember, I updated the board at the time, it was just the worst possible time, that July and August timeframe is when that was packed, couldn't afford to take it down two or three days to pave it. It just dragged on because of the weather. So, uh, we delayed doing that, and that parking lot is part of what we approved in the, uh, road and all of our paving for this year. So when we put the bids, when we go back out for bid on the roads, okay, which we have not bid out yet, and, and we do have the RFP, uh, has been, has been created, and has, has it been out yet, Jerry? I would think we pushed it to the roadway.
Yeah.
All right, the RFP recently went out, so when that comes back, it's our goal because the work for the asphalt, if, if you, if you look at one court, just for, for purposes, what we, what the courts currently have these angles on, okay? So it's very little work to fill those in, so it gets the courts like this, which gives them more room when we put additional, uh, pickleball courts on there. So we believe this pricing will be much, will get more than one, and we're going to talk to whoever we were the big contract to, because it'll be a lot more cost-effective. So it's going to cost us less money because they're going on a whole lot of other paving. This will be, as a part of that, so it saves the association money by just waiting a little while longer so we can get those additional bids. We have already ordered the, uh, netting, uh, and the up, the posts and all that, that's been ordered and we've received, I think we've received, I think Sonny said most, I know the nets ran in a couple of the poles, we're still waiting on, but all that's in. So the, the biggest part of it is, we only had one bid, and that was from rock-bottom paving, we're thirteen thousand five hundred, we, anything over five grand, we always get three bids. So that, that one jammed us up a little bit. And we certainly thought Parafirma, um, Chesapeake, we thought Jeff from Chesapeake would have bid, and no one got back to us. And Eddie's been, Eddie and Justin's been calling a lot of times, yet everyone got slammed that early summer, just jammed people up, and no one, you know, stepped up to, stepped up to do bids.
Bob, we only have one bid on the concrete, does that mean anything?
No, yeah, what we did, and little, because we weren't getting any further asphalt bids, I asked Eddie to reach out to, in this case, Park, who does a, does a lot of concrete work, and they did concrete work on, they did the yaca course, just get a quote to see how close it would be to asphalt, just to get a second bid for us, so that's why we went and did it. But after we got that bid, and we started talking to, uh, some of the pickleball folks, it's not ideal to marry up the two, uh, asphalt and concrete, but we were just trying. We said, let's just try something else because we're not getting additional bids. So we did try to seek an alternative source, but based on the fact, we, we're down the, this far down the path, timing-wise, and we know we've put out the bid for the roadways, where a lot of paving's going to, you know, we'll, we'll do a contract for a lot of paving, this should become a, a less expensive project overall for us, because they're already in here, they already have the equipment, they already have the asphalt. Because this was specialized, the price was higher.
When you get the results of that.
Of what?
The paving, asphalt. Will we please prioritize pickleball courts as first or a business as a part of that?
So what's the time, this whole thing, this whole project, just to convert these courts is months long, just because someone can't put in asphalt in these corners? Is that, is that what's hold, this whole project on?
No, no, we had the bid, you see that we've got, um, chain link fencing asphalt, we went concrete, uh, court painting, uh, we had a number of different pieces that we were trying to bid out for each, because you'll notice twelve thousand, twelve eight, ninety-six. They're all over five thousand dollars. So anything over five, we try to get three bids on. So we've been trying to get three bids on each of these, and it's just not, some of this is either specialized or limited in scope, and it's such a small project, trying to get some folks out, bid, do it, it's just been a bit of a challenge.
We can't get a small contractor up, that, small work?
We've certainly been trying to, but the asphalt is going to make a big difference for us when we reset the fence posts, the, the fence on the outside, because when we take those corners and we, and we make them nineties as opposed to forty-five, that's when we're going to reset the post. Our guys can do some of that, it's a chain link, so we've already decided we can do some of that, which we think will save cost, but we went and got bids and went just, so we knew the maximum price. And to your point, Brett, I have a fifteen thousand dollar threshold, okay? And the board approved twenty-five for the total project, which knows we're at twenty-six when we take the low bid for all of them, I'm over my threshold and over the approved amount. So really, I can't move forward without coming back to the board, and the board's not going to approve one bid on asphalt or one bid, so that's where, it's some nuances here that have slowed it down, which are out, which are out of my control.
So do you feel you have us ready for the September twenty-fourth meeting so we can get this moving along?
I believe you will because we should, and I say it believe, I don't know, remember when the asphalt, when the bid comes back next, September first, oh, September? If, if, if the asphalt bids come in and, and, and September first, then yes, we should be able to come back and have this wrapped.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the bids you're expecting for asphalt, uh, the contractors understand what timeline is for the actual work? Are you not getting bids because they can't meet the deadline or?
For, for the roadwork?
Of the asphalt courts. And the roadwork, right.
For the roadwork, we're going to add this to that when we get the bids, once we find out who the low bidder is, because there's so much work, we're going to get the cheapest per foot price. So we'll go to them and say, look, we have a small job, while you're out, we need done. And, and that'll bring that price down for us. We've done, we've done that in other areas, when we've had paving contracts come in, and we have some areas where we don't want to do the, the sand creek mags or something, we ask them to come, we kind of line those up, and we ask them to come do some of that extra work at that time, because it's much more cost-effective to do it.
I wasn't asking that, I was asking if you managed to get the bids.
Okay.
That you were missing at the moment, because you only had one bid.
Yes.
Is the issue that the contractor did not respond regionally, cause they couldn't meet your deadline, or did something else? A deadline in terms of doing the actual work?
Yeah, I think it was more, it was such a small project, and mobilize all their equipment, the roller, the, the asphalt truck, and where it's kind of tucked in back there, they've got to have a couple of different pieces to do it, I don't think it was cost-effective for them, and that's why we got thirteen thousand dollars. If the equipment's in the community already, it's a lot easier to roll it over there, and asphalt's already coming in pre-mixed truck, it's easier to mobilize that, because it's right here.
So if we had a scheduled repair for other locations, like roads and things like that, the event is already in the community?
Logistics is all that's up.
Okay, thank you.
Will we go, may I come, Mattos?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, Beach Club Bathroom Project.
I'm going to roll through mine, these aren't as detailed, these were updates, which you guys were asking for. Uh, all right, Beach Club Bathroom, uh, when we went, we, we put this out to bid, when we put it out to bid, it was design, build, turnkey, all-inclusive bid, and we want them to come in and do it. Uh, we were seeking options to renovate the current facility or construct standalone. We didn't say it had to be one way or the other, it was really going to be up to the contract. Released the RFP on fifteen June, site visits and walkthroughs occurred on twenty-eight June, uh, we had four contractors attend that meeting, okay? From there, uh, the, they went back, did their work, and, and we received three proposals back. Those proposals have been reviewed, and there's some unique nuances. One of the, I think that's next one, uh, one of the contractors, uh, actually bid to do, uh, the project in current, under the building, where it currently is, a renovation. Two of the contractors actually bid standalone, okay? So they're proposing, not renovating, but standalone. So what we're going, what our next step was going to be, and, and we pulled it, we're, we're on standby until you all decide how you want to do this. Our next step was to meet with Ocean City, so we clearly understood what the requirements from the city were, and we're also going to check county requirements. After doing, and that's the handicap accessibility and how the standalone may impact us for any other nuances in Ocean City, we'll also talk to the county the same way. Uh, from there, we want to meet with the three contractors because the, uh, the contract, the two that actually gave us bids to do the work standalone, uh, are more value engineered, so they have some, some, uh, you know, what would you like to see here or there? They give us a basic price, but we want to make sure we understand what's inclusive of that. So our goal is to meet with all three of those, finish analyzing and leveling the bids with all the pros and cons, and once we've already had the Ocean's, uh, Ocean City permitting understood as well as the county, so we can ask, you know, the three contractors for specific questions, we'll level those, and then we're going to put them in order of recommendation and bring them back to you all, you'll see all three of them, and why we're, what our results were from, from those three, and what our recommendations are and why. So you'll end up seeing all three of the bids, but we want to level them and also do a little more research to make sure we understand the requirement, if you do so much work, how it impacts it, and what the city's going to require with the, either standalone or underneath.
It's going to be very, two different, very different numbers. It's standalone versus renovating the city.
The bids were not that far apart, interestingly enough, but the approaches are very different. So we, that's why we want to take that next step before we publicize it and put it out there where everyone's going to take shots at it. Let us make sure we, our, our goal, our next step is to make sure we understood the impact. Uh, the bid number one that was under the building, there were a lot of, um, exclusions and assumptions in the bid, kind of makes you scratch your head and go, whoa, is that going to be our responsibility? And that's why I want to go that next step, before we say that's a good, or whether that sounds like our strongest bid or not, we need to understand what those exclusions and assumptions are. And that's the county and, and, and the city.
Well, sorry, but, help me understand, I mean, it seemed to me that the first step would be go to the county, find out what the requirements are or the limitations, so you know that upfront before you, certainly before you bring the bids to us, and, and we look at. We don't want to find out after the fact, that in fact, you're looking at something that's prohibited. I mean, it seemed like, it seemed, well, it's not quite what you said, but, but if, if that's what you meant, it's okay. I, the first next step is go to the county and to find out what's.
Yeah, okay. Then step one, we're going to take, we know, we now know what the bids are. We assume the contractors who do work in Ocean City and do this type of work understand what the requirements are. They're smarter than us, this is what they do, so we, we went and put it out and let them bid it. So now, because of the one contractor had so many exclusions and assumptions, and it's written in it, kind of scratch your head and say, whoa, wait a minute, we need to make sure we understand those. Uh, contractor two and three didn't have all those exemptions and assumptions, so we kind of went, okay, we need to make sure we clearly understand it before we bring it to you all. So that's why step one now for us was going to meet with the city, and they went, county we need to, to make sure we understand, and we're going to use the first contractor because we need to, to make sure we understand, and we're going to use the first contractor, because the exclusions and assumptions gives us a great starting point to ask the question. We'll get those figured out and that way, when we do bring it to the board, so from there, when we analyze it, we'll get all that figured out and then we'll bring it to you all and say, here's what we found out, here's what was proposed and here's, here are the options it's supporting. So whatever we approve, we go into the city and the county, I mean, we ensure we're going to get the required permits and the required approvals.
Bob, let me ask you a question, just for a second, since some of us are new, as you know. Has, have you given any consideration when this was actually being planned to conduct any internal study or on the approach of the project rehab versus standalone new structure, before you actually went into the bid mode? Have you considered doing, you know, Peters Conference, soliciting input before you actually went into the bid process? Just curious on, you know, doing in-house internal analysis of one approach versus the other before you launch into really a more formal bidding mode?
Well, we don't have a, a number of engineers and a number of either structural or mechanical engineers on staff where we make that approach reasonable, it would be our assumption, so by doing a more designed bid approach, allowing the contractors with that level of experience to bring it to us, and now that we have all that in front of us, that's why we're now saying we're going to go to the county and, and city to make sure we're clear what that means. So we, we just don't have the bench strength to do that, I don't have, you know, I don't have mechanical engineers or structural engineers. Or that approach, if big company, you would and you'd be able to use that design and say, here's what we want. The other way we could have done this, and we chose not to, was take a design and say, here's what we want, go to a Becker Morgan or one of the other firms and say, here's what we want, and then take that and bid it out, you know, with, and that would have met that requirement, but we felt we were best served by allowing the contractors to come out and tell us what they thought, because we had already had one before we even started this, saying, we can rehab this. A few years back, a group, tenure task force actually bid it out and they had a standalone. So we started with that, we also provided, on the, on the walkthrough, we provided a copy of that, that standalone to all the contractors, because it was our, it's our property, I even called, it was Becker Morgan and prepared, I even called them and said, can we share this information? They said, sure, so we provided that as well.
And on the, on the review of the bids and leveling them and all that, is this going to be in terms of the evaluation criterias? Is this going to be purely financial decision or other evaluation criterias will be taken into consideration and is the board aware of what those are or?
You will when we bring it to you. Oh, absolutely, well, what we'll do is, it's, it's not all financial, you have to look at what best value for, for what you're getting, that's how we're finding.
That's what I'm, that's what I try to do.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we'll do it, when we bring it back to you, we're going to say, we considered this, but we decided on that, we consider this, we consider this one, and then at that point, if we need to go back a third time, we, all right, now we don't like these three, we're down to two, then we may have those two come in and talk directly and answer any final question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Okay, Country Club.
Okay, Country Club is a business for everybody, and this is just giving you an idea where, what we're doing with the Country Club project right now. Okay, for the Country Club, basically what we've done, we had, and all the cover on this I just handed you, it's just a copy of the engineering, a copy of the engineering study evaluation that was done by Becker Morgan back on September of 2011, okay? So the board said, let's look at what to do with the, with the Country Club and let's start to evaluate, figure out what we need to move forward. So the next two pages shows you, I reached back out to Becker Morgan, Bill Sieg in particular, and said, look, what would it, I, I looked at a couple of different things, but Becker Morgan seemed like the most reasonable after talking to Bill, that they could update this, give us the most current, and what they were going to do is they're going, and they've already done this, facility inspection, they're looking at all our utility usage and this is, the bullets here are pulled right out of this, this report, I just shortened it for it. The, any of the mechanical recommendations based on current energy codes and current mechanical codes and different from the last one, they're also going to provide an exact summary, okay? Before it was, it was more generic, this one's going to be a little more detailed for it. There are also additional considerations with this engineering study, 2015 international building codes, Maryland Accessibility Code, Worcester County Flood Plane Management Code, as well as 2015 National Fire Life Safety Code. So all, all, basically, all the current codes are going to be considered with the current condition of the facility and really what the current engineering study of, you know, what the current conditions are all the way around, mechanicals and everything. So they've been out inspected, they've crawled all over the building, they've been in and out into all the little cubby holes, as a matter of fact, I was on the roof with them one day looking at some of the things they wanted to point out, so they're, they're doing a thorough inspection, the goal is to have it by, the final by September 2nd.
Saturday, Thursday?
Yeah, so, so it would be that Friday or Saturday is what, is, is sort of what the target is, when I talked to Bill Sieg recently, it's Friday, so that, that's the goal, is to have it by that Friday, that final report, and then we'll distribute that with you all, so you'll have a current, you'll, all of us will have the same update of the current condition of the facility, then we're going to have to decide what our next step's going to be. I thought the first step would be get an engineering report to really evaluate the current condition, not an opinion, but get their, you know, using their expertise, and we used them before, so it seemed like a reasonable approach.
What, what's up with the patio slash patio furniture that Ms. Jacobs was asking about the last four days?
Yeah, now that wasn't a hundred percent, I, I didn't prepare it in this, but I did speak, as I said at the last meeting, to John Malinowski, golf pro, and to Scott Nistley, who's the regional, and they're looking at what to do, they, they did not, as I said at that time, want to do extend the patio, but they didn't want to get new furniture items ordered. They were also going over to look at furniture at the yacht club, when I say yacht club, the pool area, because they wanted to get that type of furniture, and they were also looking at some others that some of the, in the pool area, the metal furniture, etc. Most people seem to like that shit.
I didn't say a word, I was just turning my attention to you.
I felt that one. That's why I'm not picking it this time, so, no, and they were also, they were also looking at, they've already gone to, to like Home Depot and a couple of those places to see, to get, because that was some of the suggestions that made new cushions and stuff, so they're kind of getting all that priced up, come back to us and say, here's what they want.
So, so they've changed their minds about where we were in the beginning to where we are now, and no furniture has been ordered or purchased based on them saying, we're still looking at other stuff, is that correct?
That would be correct.
And no patio has been built?
That is correct.
Okay.
They've changed their mind about that, too.
Okay, so we haven't done anything, that's basically where we're at, we've looked at stuff.
Waiting on them, like a, that's.
I'm waiting.
Who are the golf people?
John Malinowski, Scott Nistley, your buddy.
They're the ones that initiated this question, right?
Yes, I don't know. But that and, and some of the golfers, I mean, it was a recommendation.
I think Ernie Stiles brought it up at a town hall meeting, we, we requested it in the budget, the board requested it be done in the budget based on his recommendation.
There you go.
So it was a board request, not LU.
I don't think LU is as well.
Help LU.
Well, because LU wanted.
No, 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 no.
LU didn't want it, LU didn't.
Oh, oh, LU didn't ask for it, Ernie Stiles said it was good.
That was my question, LU didn't want it?
No, I'm not saying that, why would I say that? I, I wouldn't expect that they would be against it, it would help them bring in revenue, but the board requested at a budget meeting, he put in the budget to help LU bring in some additional revenue, the board requested, not LU.
And, and what the board approved, they've now changed their minds about.
Who has?
LU, once we're now saying, we all want the patio, we want different furniture than what we originally discussed and we're going to.
Well, I wouldn't put it on LU.
No, no, well, they didn't, they didn't.
Was John?
No, well, let me clarify, let me, they've asked to, they, we haven't changed the design of the furniture, there was never a specific design, I said, look, tell me what it is you need, we'll purchase it, just waiting for, they were getting pricing, they'd already priced for some local vendors, we also gave them some of the vendors we've used to purchase furniture and ball, because pricing. They were analyzing that, as I said at the last meeting, I'm just waiting for their recommendation for the furniture, it's not changed, they just haven't said, here's what we want, here's what we believe suits our need. They have asked to hold off on the actual expansion of the patio until we get the, the furniture in and I guess some other things, you know, we've been doing some, some fix, we had, we're doing some repairs in the pro shop, those, some painting and all that type of stuff, they, they've said, wait till all this is done, then we'd like to make a decision what to do expanding the patio. So that's, that's course of action, we're on right. You all say, go build a patio, I'll start next week.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just reiterating, they're waiting on them.
I just, I didn't understand, this went back and forth across the last two board meetings, and I'm just trying to figure out, and it's like, well, our own hearty, where are we going?
Well, you never get to know the answer unless we talk to them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, White Horse Park, this was, was presented to the board in February, this was the basic design, I just a general design and layout, at that time, we didn't have the final plans drawn up. Question came up, this was also presented in February, where the differential with the actual contract price versus the other, Brett, I think this is what you're, you're asking clarification on.
Okay.
So if you look, the 59 should have actually, or, or the 86 is what was, was inclusive of 60 plus, a, a number of things that went into it, I'm going to show you what they are on the next slide, but we also, I'd point out on here, it did not include tie-ins for county and water and chop tank electric, we didn't know the run, whether it was, there was enough fall or if we were going to have to put a, a holding tank and a maserator or whatever, there was a number of things that had to occur based on the length of the run, we didn't know that at the time that we went moving forward with this. So some of the things that were not in the initial bid at the 60, okay, included drafting, engineering permitting, permits, I went back through and kind of broke all these down, in addition to the, the electric and the water and sewer hookups, which were, were on us responsibility wise. I went back before we finalized the contract with Beach Construction and asked them to make sure all of this was, they're the ones that gave me the quotes on this, to make sure they were all included, because the question came in, when I was speaking directly with them, was, well, we'll just do change orders, when they presented the 60,000, and when I started looking, I'm like, that's a lot of change orders, I said, let's just put it all in one contract, which probably they'd go back and do, and, and she tightened them up, and through that process, through that tightening up, she, she actually, and I had a picture, it's, there you go, they actually finished the actual drawings and such, don't forget, forget the right-hand side, that was just from another slide, but I want to make sure you saw it, they actually had the full formal drawings made up, they did all the mechanicals, they, one thing that we changed through this, if you remember, it was very rudimentary, that first design, one thing that we added into the bathroom set, which was a little different than the original, there was a male and female bathroom, well, if you all follow the national news and all the, you know, what type of bathrooms do you have? So in lieu of having a, a male and a female bathroom, female, male, I'm not making that call and I'm not going to fight that out, we added another door with a family bathroom. So if you don't know what you are, go to the family bathroom. I don't mean any disrespect, I just didn't want us to have any issue, so we added a third bathroom with a toilet and sink that you can go into where it's a non-issue. So all that came in, now remember, we budgeted 145 for this, and when we went back through this and typed up some of the numbers, and Brett, that's where the 100 comes in, when we added all the other information in there, they, and I didn't want to leave an open bid and have 10 change orders, because change orders is where the money starts to get used, they had to go back and add everything in there, and they actually went to an engineer, the surveyor, all the other pieces they had to do, and that's why the contracts have a difference.
HVAC was the original?
There was, there was not, but they did have a, an add-on for 9,000 for it, and that's in, I have it written on there, because we talked about that at the board meeting.
So at 100,000, does that now include the tie-ins, the?
It does not have the tie, we still don't have a final, we found out recently that we don't have enough drop to put in, to, to connect where we wanted to right over here to these bathrooms, we have to put in a, a tank and the maserator to do it, okay? We're, we've got one bid on that and that's nine grand. And that, that's the hookups, the hookups are in, but that's the one piece, so we're right in that range right now, we just don't know for sure yet, we, we've got, I'm sorry I don't know the name of the company that bid it, I didn't recognize them when we received it, but we're, we're getting three bids on that, so we make sure we know what it is, but we have to put a holding tank and this pumping element in to get it far enough to hit where the county required us to, to connect, we can't connect right over here, we're, they're just too old, they said you got to connect this way.
So assume we're at 9,000, what additional charges are going to be required to complete then, the tie-ins for the water and electric?
We're going to be, it looks like we, assuming that we, that, let's say that's a 10 grand for that, we're probably going to be at 12, 112 total for the project, assuming the 100 plus 12, between nine, eight or nine, maybe 10.
So we're contracted today at 100, and then we have an add or coming for this?
For us.
For the pump or whatever.
Yes, that's on us, though, that and the final tie-ins are on Ocean, and that was excluded from their contract.
Okay.
And that's why that sheet said excluding chop tank and water and sewer, because no one knew it then.
Thank you for the inspiration.
And they were the updates we requested, are, are requested of us, so.
Public comments, anybody have any public comments?
Good presentation.
Thank you.
I know you all have been looking forward to this.
What's your address, Mr. Reverend?
That's right. Joe Reynolds, 84 Watertown Road. I see that Brett withdrew the motion, but I'd still like to offer him my compliments, bringing this issue forward. His motion might not be the final, the best solution, but at least he's forcing this forward, consider a serious problem that's gone on 15 years. Solving this should be at or near very top this board's work and accomplishments over this company, number one, if not very close, even above any work at that country, those people over there have suffered long enough at that place. 39 West Fifth Circuit, again, I want to thank Brad Hill for bringing this up, immediate neighbors over there complained about this place for years, they called over to OPA, I don't know who to talk to, they always tell me, we're told nothing can be done, and of course, everybody that's taped should know that we can do something about it. 3 Bramblewood, Board of Directors, about a month ago, unanimously, unanimously voted, instructed the general manager to do what is necessary to make the property of 3 Bramblewood present. As of this morning, property is in the same even worse condition than it was when the board instructed the GM to make the place better. That place is outrageous, outrageous, there's no other word to describe. On the Yacht Club voter, let me again thank Mr. Hill for a motion that seeks to solve a problem rather than to talk it to them. There should be no question about approving his motion to hire some independent plumbing firm familiar with large structures to look at this and report directly back to the Board of Directors. Problem is rather long-term and ongoing, just last night, when the Still Rockin' Band was over there, one woman reported that the smell in ladies' rooms is unbelievable. Question related to that, has a plumbing ventilation smoke screen been done recently? I don't know, I have no idea what the general manager was dealing with and working on over there, but all we do know for sure is that nothing has been solved, problem has not solved, it's a serious problem. I spoke to people working the building, workers in that building, they told me sometime to come in there to go to dinner, walking through the hallway, the smell bitching. What kind of, what kind of a place are we running over there, where you go to eat and you got to smell sores when you walk through the door? And that's not for me, I haven't, I've never smelled it, perfectly frankly, but plenty of people over there have. Finally, on the Manclan Meadows project, I won't get into all of it, I've written about this extensive, Bob, you made a comment about, we put the pylons in again, they're going to rot again. Anybody ever think that we can put in a concrete foundation, some sort of anchor it so that wood is not right in the ground? Maybe we ought to start thinking a little bit, instead of trying to make, what's the word, we try to rationalize and make excuses why we want what we want to get as opposed to what should be done.
Thank you. Bob, is there any light you can shed on 3 Bramblewood and the status of that?
Yeah, I will, I'll follow up, no, I don't, I will follow up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lynch?
Steve Lynn, 1113 Stones Run. On behalf of the.
On behalf of the, those of us that frequent the yacht club on a regular basis, I'd like to thank this board for addressing the yacht club odor in such a prompt manner. This has been going on so long, it's disgraceful, it's really a disgrace. And I just want to remind you guys, I brought this up at another meeting. Not only has this odor existed in the building from day one, the odor existed in the old building in the months before it was demolished, okay? The same odor, the same hydrogen sulfide odor, rotten egg smell, was in the old building, too. The old building in August, before it was demolished, had a, had to close a few days. And Dave McLaughlin said it was because of sewer backup, drainage backup, sewage was coming up. So I mean, this, this is all adding up, there's something seriously wrong here. And I've also heard that one of the bartenders on, one of the bartenders has complained that the odor is now coming from the tiki bar drain, including raw sewage coming up through the tiki bar drain. So I don't know, this is just something I've heard, I don't know. But thanks for doing this, I don't know why this has gone on so long, but I appreciate that you guys are doing this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hi, Frank Kramer, one-one-six Boston Drive. I am one of the co-founders of Pickleball and Ocean Pines. And this has been a four-year process to get these four. It looks like with this board, we are this close. And I just want to say, please, don't make it this close as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll try. Anyone else? Yes?
Hey, Eric, sixteen oh-three, Westfield Circle. I just have a question, what's happening to the ladies locker room at the country club? Been headlocked out, and it's been since March, and I'm wondering what the status is. Are we trying to get people to join our golf and country club? And believe me, there will be no women joining if they don't have a locker, or at least something other than four bathroom stalls. So I'd like to find out what's going on with that.
I'll get back to you on that one.
I think I really wasn't addressing the friends.
Bob, since we talked about country club projects, is there any further report there? Trying to dig come out of a hole.
I just think you should let them swing. I should let them swing for a minute. No, no, part of what we're looking at, my aspect of reporting is take a look at that, you know, what the part of their engineering report and analysis is kind of that, that's all inclusive in that process. So, and then, and hopefully in the very near future, we're going to have a real good understanding of the engineering for the entire facility.
Is there, there's a problem with mold? That's what we were told.
We had water running in that side of the building half for years. And if you look at what we found, two of the causes, am I out of line?
No.
Two of the, two of the causes were on, on the side of the building where the carts are, okay? They, over the years, and I don't know how many times it was paved, but each time they paved it, it elevated and pretty much forced the water under the building. Okay, we, we didn't know that until we actually cut out, and those of you that are golfers know, we ended up cutting a big, almost three-foot trench right down the side of the building where you found water was just constant, no matter what you did to seal it up, it was constantly running up, under the building. We also found, we also at that time pulled all the siding off around, up and around the windows and off that side of the, again, same side of the building. And found the flashing was never fully flashed properly around all the windows on the second port. So when a heavy storm, water was coming in that way and running down inside the walls, and water was running parking lot down and from the side down towards the building. So you had water intrusion in the building up top and from under the building. Put a French drain in on that side, and that French drain seems to alleviate it, the under, seemed to alleviate the underground, it seemed to capture enough where the water wasn't running directly. I mean, John's old office used to fill with water. That seemed to get alleviated, but in that real heavy rain we had about thirty days, somewhere thirty days ago, we had some, a little bit more water penetration. But it's in that same corner where we have that blocked off, because there's, there may be something else that's wrong in that back. So part of the engineering study that we're having done by Becker Morgan is kind of look at the whole building from all that aspect. From there, we'll have a better understanding which way to move with. We found no flashing, re-flashed it. When we pulled the siding off, went and fixed all that around all the upstairs windows, we're not having that water penetration there anymore. Thought we had the majority, we know we have the majority that was running under the building, take care of, but there's still somewhere else, it may be the front side is leaking in. But on top of all that, I personally walked roof with the engineer, and the roof alone has so many potential leaks in the building, it's unbelievable. So there, there's more than one area that needs to be addressed to fix the water penetration and all the other issues. So that's why we're waiting for the engineering study to give us a much better understanding of what our next step bid. That's the answer.
Thanks for giving me your thought.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure now I'm on the look, I got now I'm on the look.
Steve Toddler, I live at Forty-Bur Hill. Just one question on Manclan Meadows project, talked about the stormwater mitigation, and is that just for the area of the playground, or are you really looking at stormwater mitigation for the entire site for any future development? Because if you do it in stages, you're going to have a lot of problems. And the second thing, just for a point of humor, don't ever put asphalt around the corners of the pickleball courts. Put the Tumulus Concrete, asphalt is a hot black liquid.
Sir, the courts are asphalt, they ought to know that, right?
No, they're not. Asphalt, by definition, is a hot, black liquid. Tumulus Concrete is a combination of asphalt, aggregate, put together. I'm just, that was probably for humor, not for...
I don't know how to take that one. Which is my force.
It's just like saying you got a cement sidewalk, there's no such thing as a cement sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay, it's a concrete sidewalk. Cement is a dry powder.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? All right, do business. We have a motion, Mr. Hill.
Uh, miss, was it mistaken? Ladies first. Cheryl, did you hear?
Are you going to reach, Cheryl?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just going to explain basically what, I have already sent you all an email.
Thank you.
Give you sort of a thumbnail idea of what I was going to talk about. But what I would ask the board to start thinking about is what I think would be a great way for us to start off the year, and that is to jointly establish goals of what hopes we'll accomplish this year. Because as you know, if you don't know where you're going, any road will take you. And so I think if we develop jointly what I think as a board our goals are for the year, then we have a roadmap of what we want to try to get done and work in that direction. And so I have just been provided to you some of my suggested priorities that I think we might want to think about. And what I have listed, Pat, is to complete the CIP and reserve study for development of coming year budget, as well as a five, ten-year plan, to make a decision finally, refurbish or replace the country club based on the updated engineering study results and financial consideration, one versus the other, to complete the refurbishment, and I guess I should have said, or replacement of the beach club bathrooms, to complete, as you've asked, oh, he left, the Manclan Meadows project, complete planned improvements that we had already budgeted for the yacht club, to develop a better mutually beneficial relationship with Worcester County, to finalize all the requirements of the section seventeen turnover agreement, and the review for an update of resolution MO six, famous MO six, which...
Very much needed.
Yes. And I'm personally working on completing the update of resolution MO one, which is the CPI violations. So those are just some of my thoughts of some of the things that we might consider building into this roadmap of what we want to accomplish this year. So that's, just wanted to put it out there and get a, start thinking about it the same way I said at the last meeting. Start thinking about development budget, and this ties into that nicely.
Cheryl, would these be some of the things we could do at the orientation meeting that's coming up in September? I hope we're going to have. Bob?
Mr. Eric, we haven't finalized that yet.
Okay, but if that's there, we have three days, and we can discuss a lot of the situation.
Right, but of course, everybody needs to think individually about what they want to incorporate. That's just my suggestion, so that's it.
Thank you. Okay, motion by Mr. Hill.
I moved that the board of directors authorized the general manager to have his staff enter the property known as thirty-nine Westfield Circle to bring the unattractive growth compliance with MO four. The purpose and effect was to initiate the fast track procedures. Based on the conversations from previous meetings with Three Bramblewood, the GM needed authorization to enter the property and take action to address public safety concerns and provide compliance with the OPA resolution MO four, given the MO four violations contributed documented activity involving police dispatch. I believe that this property certainly meets the requirements for fast track procedures.
One second.
One second.
Discussion? Yeah.
First of all, I believe MO four does not require the board to actually act. MO four, freebie authorized GM, words not even mentioned, relative to brush or debris, that sort of thing. So it's different than MO one. But I took the opportunity to go out there and look at the property as well. And unfortunately, and I feel bad for Mrs. Duckworth. She's elderly, and obviously she has some concerns about safety because presumably young people are going back on this property, unfortunately.
It was.
It's got this huge big deck in the back, the right on the water. And so apparently, young people are going there and doing whatever young people do. But they're, they're, to get back there, they're walking alongside. And all of the plantings, most part, are not weeds. They are simply really beautiful plantings that were there but haven't been taken care of because the property, and it's, I'm going to say, I can't exactly figure out what state it's in because SDAT still shows it as being owned by Christopher Gallo and his wife Lisa. And there are postings on it indicating a collection agent, which I contacted, to try to determine what the actual status of this. They won't talk to me, give me any information because of not being associated with the property. But there are circuit court cases that have occurred where it was going to go into court closure. And there were filings for redemption, and then ultimately, that was all business. So it's kind of a mystery to me. And there are a number of banks that have been involved in this property because I believe of Mr. Gallo's prior mortgage business that apparently went bust along the crash of the real estate part. So when you're talking about going on the property, the only real weird weeds that exist, for the most part, are sprouts of things, and I know you've been out there as well, Brett, in the driveway. And I, I believe that Public Works has been out there over years, a couple of times, to try to clean some things up. But the majority of what's growing there are legitimate plantings, you know, grasses and what have, you know, all kinds of things. So when you say go on to the property, clean it up, and I explained this to Mrs. Duckworth, I said, you know, this is unfortunate, you know, that you are living next to a property that's in the state because of the housing market crash. But things really aren't, I mean, they are, like, if we were living there, we'd trim them back a little bit, but it's not like it's all weeds, so to speak.
It's, it's a lot of...
Go ahead, Mr. Hill.
I'm sorry. It, it, the, the growth is pretty high, and the plantings are out of control. And given the, the police activity that Ms. Duckworth noted, and additionally taped into the windows are two other notices of the property not being properly secured, and it's hardly secured right now. The growth, in my opinion, is making that property conducive for activity that's probably, should not be occurring on the property. Because it's a, it's very easy for people to get out of the street view and hide. In the, I mean, the overgrowth is six, eight feet tall, both sides of the property across the front.
But those are actual, they're not weeds per se. I mean, it is an overgrowth property, but we don't typically go in and just trim up.
It's ten years, it's ten years of what was a tame plant that's now out of control.
And there's, I have a hard time seeing the distinction between mowing grass that's typically high and trimming bushes that have gone six, eight feet high. I mean, I think, me, you know, it's, it's an expense to us. On the other hand, we have really take the expense. Ocean Pines look reasonable.
Did you go, did you go by and take a look at it?
No, I didn't, no, I, I, I have.
Mr. Trent?
Yes, thank you, Brett, President. Yeah, I did, actually. I also went by the property and looked at the other as well, thirteen that was brought up recently. I would like to, with your permission, I would like to ask the general manager to see if he can perhaps comment on the situation, and if he has a recommendation prior to us voting on Mr. Hill's motion. That'd help me certainly sort things out. I think it's one thing to have a board respond to homeowners' concerns, and we can, you know, take the time and judge what's, what's appropriate, this natural growth, what's not. With your permission, I'd like to see Mr. Thompson comment.
Sure, and Pat, I heard her ask, just as you two start, you are waiting for she has?
I, I just had a quick question. We need to alter the date for the board, is it legal, is it under legal, it's my lawyer, not for the board, I, you know, it's a dumb authority.
Okay, we're allowed to enter on to cutting grass and trimming up. We can do that. It's depending on level, if we're doing work on a house, unless it's a safety, direct safety violation, I'll come to the board. If it's a safety issue, we can correct it, it's still, certain things still require board action. And we talked about that actually two months ago. And it was the board's sense at the time, which I, which I understand and completely agree with, if it's a direct safety issue, get it done, so there's no harm, we will figure out how to deal with that. This one has, this is a growth, and I understand what everybody's saying, there, there are two different, if you look at Three Bramblewood versus this property, there is no comparison. I would agree, Three Bramblewood has fallen through, we need to correct that, no doubt. This one, on the other hand, is overgrowth, and there's a lot, this is one property, you can ride down any street, you're going to see hit, miss there. So if this is what, with the new board makeup, if the intent is to get more aggressive with this, we certainly can. But just know, there's a lot of resources that are going to be thrown at, and it's, it's a little more subjective with this, which is fine. I mean, again, it's, it's not hard, just let's collectively agree that this is the type of thing we want to go after so we can make a consistent approach to it and not kind of a piece by piece. So one option we may have, we can send CPI out, do a lot of photos of this one and use this as kind of our starting point, so we can all lay them out, look at them, since some have not seen the property. Are we all in agreement, this is the type we want to go after? And we can have our CPI team start targeting a little, targeting is probably not a good word, start focusing their efforts to identify these, which is certainly, I think, what you were asking, how do we make sure we're all on the same page? I'm a little concerned with thirty-nine that maybe we're not all on the same page with it. And to your point, Mr. James, you haven't... to your point, Mr. Stevens, you haven't seen that property. We all need to agree because this is gonna be moving forward, if this is the approach we're gonna take moving forward, I just wanna make sure we all agree to that. So that would be my only concern with this particular property.
I have driven by the property in the street view from looking up the driveways, Carol. I think it's the board's responsibility to enforce our restrictions. I think we do have to be more aggressive to keep our community attractive. So I'm in favor of being aggressive and going on the property, and at least from the street view, we need to blink these thumbs up, minimum, minimum from the street view, that's my, that's my personal...
Yeah, I, I have to say, although I haven't seen the property, and maybe I will now because I'm ashamed I didn't go out or something like that, but on the other hand, I've got three directors that have seen it, said it's really, really poor, and it said it's really, really bad, and, you know, I have confidence in your ability to tell what's really, really bad.
We were not there at the same time. We were not there at the same time.
Here's a picture, anybody would like one of the property?
Oh, that's really, really bad.
And you all would typically, just so you know, normal course of action when these come up, we typically have CPI, it's identified in CPI violation, those that have been on the board, the new ones wouldn't know this necessarily. We bring pictures you'll get prior to forming, so you can look at, so we don't look at the same picture, much like Mr. Reynolds had just presented, you all would have copies of it to look at under normal circumstances.
We, we were all sent an email.
Yeah, right.
But you do need to keep in mind, this is a balancing act, as I've said before, because this property is way behind in their assessment, and we're never gonna recover any money from this. So we just need to, when you talk about being aggressive out there and going and expending community money, just, it is a balancing act, you know, as far as how far you want to go with these properties.
I would just, I think the one difference in this property is the police activity and trespassing on it, and that takes it to a different level, it's beyond, it doesn't look good, but also we're getting calls for problems and using their police resources to go out there, and that's, you know, that's possibly taking them away from something else that's more important or, you know, life threatening to one of our residents.
There's an expense to being associated with owner.
I was, I was for the idea, you know, Pat, that, that volume on, on, I think, for the community to, to make it attractive, livable, plus, I certainly support whatever, but I also support, we're talking about, for, for the board, to me, it would be, make the little bit bigger picture and to have, you know, legacy of this board, I would rather have a, a, some sort of plan that we, that we do take care of some of these, there are a couple on my street, I'm sure there are a couple on everybody's.
Yep.
Some facts that we, yeah, we're gonna set the, set to do that, but it would be a plan rather than, you know, one, kind of one at a time, I think.
Can I ask, Bob, going back to what you said before, Pat, I think you sort of suggested that we take photographs of this property and it becomes, first of all, it's board-directed that they'll clean it up, but that's kind of the poster child for properties that need to be attended, and sort of, so as CPI is looking at what's a violation that needs to take, well, that the, you and Public Works have to do something, they look at that and they say, yeah, there's, there is that. I mean, I, I think you have to take initiative, it can't be the board waits for a plane thing goes out in order to fill out a regular basis, and it's gonna impact budget. Like, you know, I'm, I'm with Pat, I mean, we spend money on a lot of things, if anything, it's gonna make Ocean Pines look better, keeping up those, they're like out.
My question would be, was, is this in addition to the CPI date, is that what you're saying? The CPI is doing one thing...
I believe I, and not to rip, I believe I understood it to be just more aggressive action. That's what I'm hearing. And we've been on this property before, just so you know, and cleaned the driveway, we sprayed for fresh, this is not the first time we've actually entered this property and done work, and for the, it's not, and so for us, the grass and stuff, we, we can address without elevating it to the board every time, we, if it's the intent of the entire board to be more aggressive with these type of properties, again, because there are expenditures that come along with it.
Call for the question. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Opposed, raise your hand.
Well, I'm not opposed, certainly, but frankly, we don't actually need it.
Well, we don't, but we need, if action's not being taken, the board should step in and make sure action is being taken.
We're providing the general manager guidance in this, that's what I...
What was the result of the vote?
No, 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 I, I'm in favor of it, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, I'm just pointing out that MO4 doesn't...
Six, one.
Six, one.
Six, one.
Uh, Pat, voted against. I've already asked. Okay, I have one more motion by...
Talk about Pat or the other?
Me, Pat.
No, no.
The bail, Pat.
No, we got your vote.
My bail guy. The second motion I had to present was I moved that the general manager immediately mobilize an objective third-party licensed plumber to the yacht club to provide further troubleshooting of the persistent odor and for written reports be provided to all members of the board directors by 12:00 PM on Friday, September 2nd, from both the request of third-party licensed plumber as well as to reporter or reports from any other contractors who have investigated this issue. The purpose and effect is, I have, since October, it's been reported much before that, complaints have been made regarding the odor in the yacht club. In recent months, the GM has reported several actions taken to troubleshoot and remediate the issue, however, the issue still persists. Given the length of time, the problem has persisted, and the severity of such an issue in a food service establishment, it is necessary for the board to intervene and escalate the issue for investigation and repair.
You have a second? Discussion?
Well, I'll say that I think Bob has done almost everything he could think of, and maybe just having a fresh set of eyes look at it can hurt.
I mean, this has been going on for a long time, I've queried the general manager back October 3rd last year, and it was a work order in at that time, and it's still persistent. I believe we should do the same. Call for the question. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 All, okay, pass. I was gonna say, I've known a lot of plumbers my life, no two plumbers ever agree with each other, ever.
They lawyers. It's not a same business.
Josh, is I, Mr. Trend?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the board of directors for the Ocean Pines Association vote to approve the street names, one change, to rename Winner's Circle Drive to Prequess Drive and keeping Winner's Circle Board, and of course, King Richard's Road, where it ties into the existing King Richard's Road related to the development known as the Triple Crown Estates being developed by Steen Associates, Inc. Background, today, the developer secured the approval from the Director of Emergency Services for Worcester County, Maryland. Yesterday, Mr. Thompson was contacted by Mr. Marvin Steen for assistance. Mr. Steen is reaching out to the board now at the advice received from Mr. Thompson. Purpose and effect. The county's DRB office also requires that Steen Associates, Inc. secures approval from the Ocean Pines Association. Since the OPA's regular board meeting is not until September 24th, Mr. Steen is asking that the board considers his request be reviewed and voted on today. This will allow Steen Associates to proceed with securing final approval from the Worcester County in a timely manner.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question of Mr. Thompson about what is the contractual, if that's the right word, agreement that we have with Mr. Steen relative to this being a part of the town?
I don't have that with me, I do have an agreement that was crafted several years ago, I did bring in, I was, so we do have an agreement for that section, as you all know, there have been some changes from then, from the initial development or proposed development to what the current, basically, there were bigger, larger, single-family homes, they went to a different style of homes. So that was a change that was brought to the board six months ago?
Yeah.
About right?
We approved it.
So, so you all are aware of that, well, some of the board is aware of that, so I certainly pulled that out and shared that with, you know, Pat, so I can get that contract out to you all if you'd like to see, or what that proposed was.
I have the contract, not here.
Cheryl, do you see any illegal, I'm sorry, do you see any illegal applications for changing street names?
No, I was, I, I, not part of the board when this occurred, this development, I was just querying, you know, what was the arrangement that we had?
Almost nobody here was part of the board when this happened, like, I can guarantee that, but it was an arrangement with Steen for consideration that this property of its, would be developed and it would be part of Ocean Pines. So, I mean, that agreement is, we do have. He's exercising it now, like, I mean, I'm talking 15 years ago, perhaps, I don't remember when exactly, he had to do the YMCA and, and he donated to Ocean Pines, or the YMCA in order, yeah, well, donated to the YMCA, build a YMCA and they, but it kept the property. Anyway, yeah, I mean, this is, you know, there is a, I think I have, I'm sure, Bob.
I have a question about this, Winner's Circle Drive currently exists? You're renaming Winner's Circle Drive, is it a street that, you say rename Winner's Circle Drive to Prequess Drive? So there's currently a Winner's Circle Drive?
I think that this is in response to Director of Emergency Services, Tom, that was an action.
What I'm saying is, does Winner's Circle Drive exist as a street?
My feeling is that it does.
I think it's all drawings.
I don't believe it's, I don't believe it's on our current roadways, I believe that was an industry, proposed development that Marvin Steen had.
So it's a proposed name on the original draw, if it's not developed as, yeah.
It looks like, it looks like it might have been a conflict because he's keeping Winner's Circle's port, and I would guess with emergency services, they were confused with two streets with a very similar name.
It has to do with the dispatch confusions.
I think that's what the change is. The question I had is, the only thing this vote is for is approving the name, it has nothing to do with an agreement or anything else, I haven't seen.
I just didn't know if there were homes already on the Circle Drive or not.
Okay, oh, yeah, my question was unrelated to yours, I just wanted to make sure, I knew I was only voting on the name.
Yep.
Because that's always provided.
One question. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Here you go. I think we have one last motion by Mr. Hill.
I motion that the board of directors for the Ocean Pines Association move a closed session for discussion of contractual issues as permitted by the Maryland Homeowners Association Act, Section 11B, 111, Number 4, a meeting of the board directors or the other government body of homeowners associations, or a committee of the homeowners association may be holding closed session for following purposes, discussion of matters pertaining to employees or personnel, specifically the general manager's contract dated May 1st, 2014, and extended by the previous board on April 28th of 2016. Am I allowed to read the purpose and effect, or do we end there?
Can I just leave the motion?
Okay.
Make a motion to go to closed session to discuss this issue?
Yes.
All in favor of journey to go into closed? Second, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor to go into closed session? Raise your hand, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, two, what, two? Five, two. Closed session.
Well, we were not gonna have any discussion.
To go to close? I think the discussion, if there is discussion, should be in closed session.
Well, let me just say, reason I voted against that is because this is something that was presented at the last minute, and I did not plan for us to have, it's gonna go on for hours and hours tonight, and it's already after 6:00, and this is a very important motion, and I would prefer that pick another time, go in closed session, do that, not extending this meeting out for hours to deal with this. I mean, I don't think that's fair to people when we didn't know till the last minute.
I was just...
Cheryl, I would suggest of going closed session and see what happens. Doesn't have to take hours and hours, I think you're just presuming something that you don't know, and you may, you may very well be correct that, but we should, and by actually advice of our council, we should discuss that part of it in closed session.
And, and I would ask that Joe Clark be a part of that, and I'm respectfully requesting that we pick another time to do this so we can devote a proper amount of time, but as I said, I didn't plan on being here, you know, we started meeting at 4:30, it's almost 6:30, I mean, I really, it's Friday.
I understand, I understand, but the board voted in a cool direction too.
We didn't have any notice about this.
I understand, I understand your...
I don't have, all my, I have one about the, the, for the yacht club, but I don't know what we're talking about. I know I'm not there, but I'm just...
Yeah, she has some information provided.
We voted five to two to go into closed session for contractual issue.
Well, we did because we get to...
Pat, you're correct, you have not seen the motion for this.
Everything is for the motion to form.
That is also correct.
We withdrew them.
I appreciate it, but we tried, we've been on the phone, thank you.
Mr. Hill, you have a question?
I would just, to Cheryl's comment, I just received this contract today, and the clause that I referenced for closed session, time is of the essence and we have a very limited window to work with.
That's far, I'm just saying, I, I think this deserves the right amount of time.
Okay, this should be discussed in closed session. We voted five to two to go into closed session.
Fine, I'll stay as long as I, I do have other obligations, I'm not staying on here forever.
Okay, return it to closed.
This is your half, thank you.
And without, yeah.